We had some.
I don't have to worry about variances. Where I could rewrite code like they did in, um, rewrite the code like they. They don't have to.
I thought it's always right.
Like you either get the bill to the code or that's it?
It was the one next door, O-Vito.
O-Vito? Seriously?
We only have two members of O-Vito.
Castleberry's run a special mass. Oh, he was O-Vito when I was.
He was a variant.
And he was telling me all kinds of stuff, like he was telling me all my, during my interview, he was telling me all kinds of stuff.
Say your house was built in nineteen thirty-five on whatever your small little lot is.
Way to go.
Build it, but you can't need to build the same footprint, you have to build it smaller.
They, they just wanted to bring.
So, is that a staff decision then?
They might be doing, they might be doing like minutes.
Okay, okay, I was gonna say, cause that was.
Like a limited, but they do not have, they know what.
Uh, well, I don't mind being, I. Hey Kim, can you hand me the gavel please? If I could see the thing. I've never got to hit the gavel. Feel very difficult. Did you wanna, Patrick, did you wanna call the meeting?
Would you like me to take your picture and?
No, no, not even a little bit. Nope.
So he'll know what your future is?
No, I don't wanna be a judge. When is it seen? Oh, I will be a federal judge, but nobody would ever be dumb enough to appoint me to that.
Cause I'm gonna tell you one little. These guys, that's a lot of work while they're trying to listen. They're doing all.
Yeah, they're like on Facebook.
I don't know if you had to make sure, like, we could, they could record.
Yeah, you just don't talk. Every judge is.
You, you can just tell.
Well, he's a criminal attorney.
Yeah, well, he was like, yeah. At Wilson. Wearing so much. And how it can go. But it was, it was like, that's a soup. Like, because.
This meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board for October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen is called to order. Uh, although I am the city attorney, we currently lack a chairman or a vice chairman, so I am going to go ahead and proceed with the meeting until we have elections. So Kim, if you could please call the roll.
Mister Parker. Mister Seaman.
Here.
Mister Hesse.
Here.
Mister Coiner.
Here.
Mister Terrapani. Mister Frain.
Here.
Mister Stavropoulos.
Here.
Miss Pace.
Okay, now we will have the election of officers. Um, how this will go is first, we will go ahead and elect the chairman. Um, I will go ahead and ask for anyone who would like to nominate somebody as a chairman. You can currently nominate yourself. There will be nomination in a second. Nominate as many as you would so choose, and then we'll go ahead and take a vote. We'll do it by voice vote, so yays and nays. Um, so is there anyone who would like to be nominate, who would like to nominate themselves or nominate someone else as a chairman? And you have to have a chairman, so somebody must be nominated.
Well, out of default, I guess I will if, if, uh, no one else wants to.
Did you nominate yourself?
I'll nominate myself, yes, he said, yes.
I like it.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there any other nominations?
Thank.
Seeing none, um, we'll go ahead and just take a voice vote, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, welcome chairman.
Yay.
You get the, pass the gavel. Welcome to Thunderdome. And now, uh, it is time to elect a vice chair. Do I have any nominations for a vice chair? For those of you who do not know, the vice chair will just sit in the chairman's role in the event that the chairman cannot make the meeting. And you have to elect a vice chair.
I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
So we have one nomination for vice chair, or is there a second for that nomination?
A second.
We got a second, any other nominations? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none opposed, welcome Mister Vice Chair. All right, and now Chairman, you may proceed with the meeting.
Okay. It is seven oh-two, and we will start the. Planning and zoning meeting today? Do I have to stay a date?
Nope, we're just, we're already on a, agenda item number three.
So forgive me public, I have no idea what I'm doing up here.
You're doing good.
And I will help you through it, no worries. So we are, uh, and you can announce the next agenda item. Which is number three.
We might have lost his agenda. I know I made a move, I, I know it's. It's all my fault, you can blame me.
Okay, we've got election authors. Approval amendments of September eighteenth, twenty seventeen. Do we have a second of the approval of minutes?
Need to call for a motion?
Call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve?
Move to approve.
And we have a second? Call for discussion?
Call for discussion?
Discussion, you can do this by voice vote, so all those in favor, aye, all those opposed.
All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Uh, next on the list is the quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any conflicts of interest or experte communications this evening? Seeing none, are there any, uh, please, all applicants or anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn. Chairman? We can move on to the next number five, just announce the agenda item.
So the next on the list is Application seventeen seventy-three, site plan approval for Morgan Retail, twenty Morgan Street.
I guess that's my cue.
That's your cue.
All right, I just wanna correct one thing under the location, under item two of the property information, that should actually read twenty Morgan Street, not Lake Street and nineteen, cause this is on nineteen. Um, this application is for actually an existing building, um, on Morgan Street that, um, was previously a dry cleaner. It spends vacant for some time, and the applicant is looking to, um, essentially create a new retail use there. They are adding, um, the parking lot and things that were not previously part of this application when the dry cleaner was there. They've added some landscaping, um, they're really trying to bring this site up to code and to meet as much of as possible the special area plan, cause this is located in the special area plan. Uh, with that, they are, um, I've had them provide you guys some photos, they, they don't really have, um, elevations and that type of thing, which you normally see with your packet, mostly because this is an existing building, so they're gonna do some minor renovations to the building, but the building is really still in good condition. It just really needs to be, um, you know, painted and, and, and some TLC on the outside. Um, most of the parking lot that they're actually proposing, with the exception of, um, the handicap spot, will actually be gravel, it will not be paved parking lot, so there's limited, um, disturbance on the site where they're gonna need any type of, um, drainage system or that type of thing. There's actually a letter in your packet from Southwest Florida Water Management, they are exempt from the ERP permit process, so they are, they do not have to provide additional stormwater. They were very, um, creative in the way that they designed this. We asked them to close the Morgan Street, um, entrance, because in the special area plan really encourages, um, access to be taken off the alleyway, there is an active alley here, um, so it's an appropriate use for them to close that and have their main entrance off the alleyway, so that's where the new main entrance is going to be. Rather than having them pull up the, the pavement, at Morgan Street, we had them put in a fence, so there, there's gonna be a, a black gate there, so that they can still utilize that, would allow for fire access and the need, if for a need to get in there, that type of thing. Um, if need be, it would allow for, uh, solid waste to get in there, that type of thing. It's just the idea of, we don't want them to pull up that pavement. They were able to actually integrate their existing driveway with their handicap parking space and the walkway over to the building, so by doing that, they've really condensed the amount of pavement that has to happen on this site, which is excellent. This is really, um, a testimony to that, the applicant kinda working through the, um, planning process during the technical review team to really meet the criteria of the land development code with an existing site. They've really worked hard to get where they're at, um, with this project. I can answer any questions you may have, but that's the basis of this application, is it's an, an, an existing building that we're gonna try to bring back online by updating the site and getting it ready for, uh, retail use, which is allowed in the land use.
So do they know what they wanna do with this building?
Um, the applicant can speak to that if they have a specific use. They told us that they wanna do retail, um, that's really all that we need to know is that the use is consistent with the zoning, so. I can answer any questions, and any other questions?
No questions? And we'll proceed? Any, anyone from the audience would like to speak?
Well, we would ask the applicant to give a presentation.
Does the applicant wanna come down and give a presentation? No?
No.
Okay. Open to the public.
Public comment?
Do we have any public comments?
And we'll close the public portion of the hearing.
Close the public portion of the hearing.
Chairman can call for a motion.
Or discussion.
Or what?
Or discussion if you have any other questions.
Motion to approve Application seventeen seventy-three, site plan approval for Morgan Retail.
Second it.
Second? We have discussion? Then, we'll have a vote?
Mister Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Mister Frain?
Yes.
Mister Coiner?
Yes.
Mister Hesse?
Yes.
Mister Seaman? Thank you. Um, on this application for Morgan Street, if you do not want your large plans, I will collect those at the end of the meeting, because we'll actually use them for the board of commissioners' meetings. You're welcome to keep them, but if you don't want them, we will definitely take those.
So. Application passes, do I say that?
You can, you can say the motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next on our list today is Application seventeen dash ninety-eight, conditional use approval for Sun Coast Auto Sales to expand auto sales to an additional building at four forty South Nellis Avenue.
Okay. This is, um, the existing site where the classic cars, um, are already being sold on this property. Um, there's actually some other, uh, uses in the complex of buildings that are there, there's, there's a, auto, several auto oriented businesses there. Um, the current applicant, um, is asking for, essentially, he has got a repair business in this additional storefront, um, that's located on the property, and if you look in your, um, packet, there is a, um, a photo, uh, an aerial photo that shows the location of the building that we're actually talking about, it's towards the end of the packet, and, and back of the packet. That aerial photo shows the location of the actual building in question. There are several buildings on this site. The, this is not the building that currently is being used for the classic cars, and it's actually two different owners that are, are applicants that are working, um, on this property, kinda sharing the space. And so as a result, this building currently just has auto repair in it, which is allowed by use. The expansion of allowing him to put two additional classic cars into this building to kinda have a showroom, um, uh, component to the repair business that he's got out there is what we're actually asking for, is that additional, the ability to actually do auto sales. Under the particular section of the special area plan, any expansion of the existing use requires us to come through with a conditional use approval. It's already happening on this property, it's clearly consistent with the land development code and the special area plan. I have no concerns, um, from the, that it's incompatible, it's clearly compatible, so as a result, staff's recommending approval on this. I can answer any questions that you have, but this is a very simple application of just expanding into an existing storefront with the auto sales use.
Right. Anyone have any questions?
Presentation by the applicant?
Presentation by the applicant? Would the applicant like?
No, you don't need it, uh, guess not.
Well, then we. Any comments from the public? No public? Okay.
Close the portion of the public hearing and then call for a motion?
All right, close, close the.
Public hearing?
Public hearing?
And call for a motion?
Motion for.
Just call for a motion?
Just call for a motion?
Uh, what is your motion, sir?
Pardon? Need to find out while we're looking.
Number six.
Um, mode of approval of seven, um, Application seventeen dash ninety-eight.
Second.
Any discussions? Call for a vote?
Mister Stavropoulos?
Um, well, I do have to say it fits a criteria to a T, cause that, it used to be a car dealership. So, yeah. That's a no-brainer. My vote is yes.
Mister Frain?
Yes.
Mister Coiner?
Yes.
Mister Seaman?
Yes.
Mister Hesse?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on our list is Application seventeen dash ninety-five, future land use and rezoning amendments for Rainville Road Site. I'm assuming that A and B go along with that as well, ordinance number twen- twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight and ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine, I'm sure. Have some explanation?
Yes, okay, so this is, um, an application that is a two-part application. What is actually being requested here is to change the two maps that, um, we currently have. One is for the comprehen-, goes with the comprehensive plan, that's called your future land use map, and so the land use associated with your future land use map is your future land use. Um, that has to be changed every time an applicant comes, um, before us, that want, then when they wanna change a use on a property generally. Generally, it's not always the case, but generally, that's the case. This, um, has a very interesting history. The other component is the zoning, and so there's a zoning amendment that go, that, that is for the zoning map. So you change both in, in this particular case, because this actually was changed in the not-too-recent past to a residential use to allow for residential development on that property. The, um, owner who currently owns it now would like to go back to the original land use prior to the amendment, which is, uh, limited, uh, industrial, which is consistent with both, um, our planned area, our planned, um, plant uses in the area as well as the county-wide land use, um, in the area surrounding this. So they're going from the existing residential zoning district to the IL district, which is limited industrial, and then on the zoning map, that's a future land use, on the zoning map, they're going from, um, the residential zoning, in that case, it's a PD, to, um, industrial restrictive. And so what I've included in your packet is the uses for all of the different land use, both the land, both land uses, and I've also included both the zoning districts, so you can see the difference in uses. The intensities are quite different, because you're dealing with a, a residential density existing on the site, however, this had been previously have a future land use of what it, what it's, what they're asking for now, and they previously did have a, a zoning that was the same, so as a result, staff is pretty confident and is recommending approval of this change, because there's limited concerns because of the fact that this was previously approved at these land uses, so when this was a qua-, when this was brought into the city years ago, it was brought in at the, that land use and that zoning, so actually going, uh, zoning up to a residential u- use gives, that gave them more, uh, was a more intense use than what they're, what can be done there for the, um, industrial. It's kind of a weird site. Um, there's some issues with some wetlands and things that'll be dealt with at the time of site planning, but this is the preliminary stage. Essentially, they're ready to come back and, and actually develop this site, um, industrially, and so staff has no concerns over the change, the request back to the original zoning and the future land use, so staff is recommending those changes. And I can answer any questions that you have, but it's.
Already an industrial area out there anyway.
All around there, with the exception of the church that's across the street, and the church that's adjacent to the site is pretty much industrial. Um, it, it was actually, that, you know, they speculated that they'd be able to get a residential project in there, I think it would have been tight for a residential, um, piece, but they did have a plan um, at one time to do that, it's just, it's, it, the market's not there, they're ready to actively use the site, so we need to get them the land use that's the most appropriate for the use that they wanna do.
This wasn't connected to any of the super fund, the cleanup and all that?
No.
No. Okay. Any other question?
The site would actually have to be built up.
Well, they'll have to meet whatever the criteria is in the building code at the time of site planning when they're actually come through, so this won't be your only bite at the apple on this, when you get to the, um, the site plan, we'll be looking at concurrency, one of the concurrency issues, obviously, you're aware of is drainage, and you have to meet the flood zone to make the drainage work, so as a result, we'll be looking at that at that time.
Any other questions? No questions?
The applicant is here, if you'd like to hear from the applicant?
Yes, please.
State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. Uh, my name's Robert Purgalizzi, I'm an AICP certified planner, like, like Heather, and I'm with Gulf Coast Consulting, we're representing the owner and, uh, the contract purchaser. As she stated in her staff report, the site was previously industrial, limited land use and zoned industrial restricted back in oh-five during the townhome boom, remember that? The land use on this was changed, but no project ever came forward. It's really not appropriate for residential, it's in the flood plain, so you'd have to build, build it up. So, as Heather mentioned, we're seeking to go back to the original land use and zoning. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions you have, or any questions members of the public have. Staff recommends approval, we request your recommendation too.
All within what you need to do, so, um, any questions from the public to this gentleman? Yes ma'am. You'll have to come up here, please, and state your name?
Yes, open.
Please state your name and address.
Is this the public comment portion of the meeting?
This is the public.
Okay. Make sure we're following along.
I'm from the community of Christ, I have to be the small church that's by that property. The industrial air.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm Betty Akey, I'm at fifteen six forty-five Eastbourne Drive, Odessa, Florida, so I've come a little ways. Um, we have had La Magna gas by our church, which is an industrial. And we also had an explosion that came into our church. Are we gonna have that kind of a problem in the future with the having industrial there?
Ma'am, this entire area where both those churches are is industrial. The entire plan for that north portion of the river, above the river, is all industrial. So, right now, there's no establishment of the uses, there's a list of the criteria of the uses in the land development code for these proposed land uses I would recommend prior to the, the next hearing before the BOC, that you come seek some guidance in our office, or we can provide that information to you, if you wanna provide your contact information to the recording secretary, we can get that information to you, so that you can look at the uses that are allowed.
That would be my question, is, are we going to be and have problems like we had two years, oh wait, what was, oh, eleven? Twenty-eleven? Where a canister exploded and came into our church, and we had quite a bit of damage. I'm concerned about the type of industrial that you're going to allow there.
And we can, we be, got to provide you the land use, that will give you some guidance on the types of uses that are allowed there. Um, right now, there is no establishment of the actual use that'll be on that property. That will be established at the time that actually bring a site plan forward and give that use to us. All that we can give you is the list of the uses that are allowed in the land use.
Okay, I was just, that, that was my question.
And again, if you wanna provide your contact information to the recording secretary at the end of the meeting, we'd be glad to, um, get in touch with you and provide that information to you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? No? Then.
We'll close the public portion of the hearing?
We'll close the public part of the hearing. Any discussion?
Call for a motion.
Sorry?
Or you could call for a motion.
Yeah. Think there's any discussion, so call for a motion, please?
I move approval of Application seventeen ninety-five, future land reuse and rezoning amendments for Rainville Road, including ordinance twenty seventeen twenty-eight and twenty seventeen twenty-nine.
We have a second?
A second.
Call for a vote?
Any discussion?
Or any discussion? No discussion? Call for votes?
Looks like it should never have been residential in the first place to me.
No.
Yeah.
Mister Stavropoulos?
Yes.
Mister Frain?
Yes.
Mister Coiner?
Yes.
Mister Seaman?
Yes.
Mister Hesse?
Yes.
So Application seventeen ninety-five passes, thank you. Uh, we are now, I guess we close the public portion of this.
We just moved to agenda item number eight.
Which brings us, yes, to staff comments?
I would like to just welcome our chair, you're doing a fabulous job already, and our vice chair, fabulous, I'm glad that you guys, um, agreed to be, and if there's anything that my staff can do to help you, um, in your positions, please let us know.
So when do we get the new car or the limo, does that start?
Sorry, that's not my budget.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, if I had my choice, I'd get you lots of stuff, but anyway. Um, we don't have a whole lot of staff comments, just welcome to the new board members, welcome to our new chair and vice chair, looking forward to a exciting year. And if you have any questions, just give me or Kim a call. I actually do wanna call down the new city planner, so she can introduce herself. Um, this is Michelle Wagner, she recently started with the city, she is a graduate, uh, graduate of our Citizens Academy. She, um, is our first hire from Citizens Academy, so it's fabulous for, um, the city to have that, she's a resident here in town. And I'll let her, to, let her tell you a little bit about her background. Michelle?
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me. I've lived in Tarpon Springs since two thousand three, and before I went to school to be a planner, I was a deputy sheriff in this county for ten years. So, I've been around for a long time, but I'm on my eleventh day with planning and zoning, so we'll learn together. And I'm very excited to be working with the city, and I look forward to serving alongside all of you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks.
By the way, I heard a lot, uh, I've known a few people that went through the academy and they really enjoyed it, so are you gonna do that again?
Yes, we are continuing the Citizens Academy. If you have any interest, if you would like to be part of that, they meet on Wednesday nights, um, we have two classes a year. I need to see Irene Jacobs, who actually probably sworn you guys, and she can get you registered. I think there's, the class is half full for the, for the winter class, but there's still some room open, so if you wanna try that, feel free to get in touch with her.
People that went, so that was just fantastic, they did a nice job, got to see a lot of what goes on in the city, highly recommended, so if anybody out there would like to go, please go, it's.
It's a great oppo-, it's a great opportunity for you to see, like, basically the back door, um, of all the different departments, you get a little bit more understanding, and it's super great for us, because folks who are in Citizens Academy do wanna join some of our boards and things, so you're, you're getting new interest in, in the boards, so that's fabulous. We are, will have a meeting in November. Right now, I know I have at least two applications, possibly more, so just keep tuned for that. And that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Very good.
With that, we move on to number nine, board comments. Anyone on the board care to comment? Well, I certainly do. Uh, the Morgan Street, uh, project, I'm really happy to see someone making use of existing buildings and not building new buildings. I'd really like to see all our empty spaces being used before we permit to build another thing in this town. Uh, that's great, and the, and the new car sales building, also making use of that, makes sense, I mean, that was always that way anyway, so, you know, these were all good applications tonight.
Well, good, thank you.
And the staff has done an excellent job, as always, thank you. Any other comments, board? Well then, we'll move on to number ten, adjournment. Do I hear a recommenda-, uh, a motion?
I can't make it.
So. Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
We are adjourned.
We're adjourned at seven twenty-six.
Thank you.
Excellent job, everybody.
That was great, ma'am.
I'm impressed.
I am too.
It's a be amazing board already. Getting another set of plans back. That's awesome, thank you. Um, we will recycle it for you. If you wanna leave it on the Diaz, we'll recycle. Anything that you don't want, we recycle. I just asked for the big plans back, if you guys don't want them, because I'm gonna recycle those to BOC.
I keep mine. I have a big notebook at the office.
You can keep whatever you want. I'm sure that you wanna review them and.
My notes and go, I remember that.
Yeah, the house I don't need.
Yeah, something. Really no need to have it around.
Oh, good.
Don't have to go into emergency.
No.
She is pretty.
Starting my second.
pneumonia is no joke.
Well, I just called the church that she goes to periodically.